Please let us remain standing as we approach this 9/11 date and remember those who lost their lives and remember our first responders and our military men and women serving around the world. Thank you, you may have a seat. Welcome to the Village Board meeting, today is September 9th at 7:00 PM. The next Village Board workshop meeting will be Tuesday, September 24th. Board, do you have any concerns about the next workshop meeting on the 24th?
I may or I do, but everybody else doesn't know.
Let me just double check my calendar, I believe I do. September 24th. No, I don't have anything else noted, I'm good.
Moira, Ms. Hertzman?
Good.
Good. Mr. Hagan, you'll make it work?
I'll make it work.
Okay, 9:24 at 7:00 PM, Village Board Workshop Meeting. Next regular Village Board meeting will be Monday, October 7th. Okay, next on the agenda, I have the Girl Scouts Silver Award Presentation. Do we have the Girl Scouts here this evening? Hello, come on up and state your names and what you are proposing.
Hi, I'm Megan and this is Jenny and we're working on our Girl Scout Silver Award.
Um, the project is to get small, um, small plastic containers, um, to put your batteries into it, so it's gonna be healthier for the environment.
We're collecting them so that you can decorate them, so you have something nice to look at in your house and you'll remember to put it there. And we're collecting them all throughout the month of September until September 27th.
And, um, yeah, basically what she said and, um, we, um, are going to, we just ask for you to donate because Suffolk, um, kind of supports the Girl Scouts and we need more people to donate, so we're just asking for your kind hearts to, um, to donate.
Okay, so, so we, you would like us to, to donate these plastic bags to you?
And containers.
The containers, right, and you're going to decorate them?
Yeah.
Right, and then you're, you're gonna give them back and then we're gonna put our disposable batteries and other electronics in them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
On not just Battery Saturday, when you come and donate your batteries, you will receive a decorated container.
To put more batteries into?
Yeah, to put more batteries in.
Oh, okay, okay.
And is there a specific container that you wish to get?
Uh, mayonnaise jars, uh...
Peanut butter jars.
Peanut butter jars.
Something...
Anything that's like wide enough to fit like a battery in, like multiple batteries.
I saw those big pretzel jars, that's a good one. I think we have one right now in our office and it's gonna be empty by tomorrow, so we'll have to save it. I think that's a good one.
Like cleaned out.
Oh yeah, of course. Okay. How many do you need?
We were thinking anywhere from 100 to 200 containers, hopefully.
Okay, so we're gonna have to orchestrate putting together some type of drive at the same time for you guys, for the Girl Scouts.
Yeah, we have already spoken to the middle school principal and we're going to be collecting there, but any outside help would be welcome.
Okay. Oh, so just, so we get it for the record, Megan, your last name is Simon, correct?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I don't know...
Dispensa.
How do you spell that? Okay, alright.
And you're both from Troop 402-97?
Yes.
Well, that was an excellent presentation and request and I'm proud of you girls for coming up and presenting to the board, that was excellent, thank you and we'll definitely be in contact.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Chief Lapori from the Fire Department?
Good evening.
Good evening.
A few things to go through. Um, first, we need a motion accepting Michael Palmucci as an over 18 member of the Hose Company.
Okay, do we have a motion to accept Michael Palmucci as an over 18 member of the Hose Company?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by trustee Hagan. Second?
Second.
Second by trustee Gerard, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. That's right, we need, we need volunteer firefighters, great.
Um, second thing, we need a, a resolution extending the coverage under the New York State Volunteer Firefighters Benefit Law to cover Michael Stark and Dan Moran because they are deputy fire coordinators for the county. Uh, we did the same type of coverage for the guys that are on the hazmat team and the technical rescue team for the county and we just need to, to extend it to these two.
Okay, so I have the resolution to extend the coverage under the New York State Volunteer Firefighters Benefit Law to authorize Village firefighters who participate in Rockland County Emergencies, Emergency Service Activities. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, do I have any discussion? So, just on a discussion point that this would cover, Mr., let's see who it is. Suffolk Fire Chiefs, okay, so when they're outside of the Village of Suffolk, they will have the same coverage as operating within the Village of Suffolk, so the board's aware. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, we'd like a resolution, um, the resolution that's printed here is a little off, but it's, um, authorizing 191500 to attend the 9/11 memorial down in Hoboken. Uh, basically what they do is they go and, go on the Hoboken side there where they have the light set up for where the Twin Towers used to be and get a picture. They were authorized to do it last year, except they wound up leaving too late and they wouldn't have gotten back till 3 o'clock in the morning, there was a four and a half, five hour wait. So, what they'd like to do this year is have two guys, just two guys in the truck leave at like 5 o'clock and go down there and see if they can get it done this year, get in line earlier and then just take, get the picture and come back.
Okay, so I have the motion authorizing the Village of Suffolk 191500 fire truck to participate in the September 11th Memorial Parade to be held in Hoboken, New Jersey on September 11th, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, we, uh, we need a resolution declaring, uh, the old tac radios surplus, uh, Jeremy said he got a list to aiming for it, serial numbers and stuff?
Yes, I have the list in front of me.
Okay.
So I have a resolution here to declare Fire Department radios as surplus, you have it in front of you, um, there's one Motorola CDM 1550 and then there are nine other Motorola CDM 1550s. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any discussion on the surplus radios?
I presume these have been replaced by something more modern or...
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next thing is, I was wondering, uh, with status of the mutual aid agreement with Allendale?
So, that agreement remains under review and is in the process of being revised. I plan to check in with the mayor later this week on that document.
Okay, if there's something you need me to coordinate with, just let me know and I can, uh...
I sure will.
I can get ahold of our chief or whatever needs to be, kind of take care of it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Um, the next, the guys asked me to bring up the bay floors again, if there was any plans on anything with those.
I know we had previous discussions about them.
We had a lot of previous discussions.
We had a lot of previous discussions in regards to them, I know it wasn't allocated in the budget at this time, but, um, let us continue that discussion.
Okay, and now the new truck, uh, to replace the tanker, um, the specs, the committee's done with the specs, we're waiting for the, for the, for the final set to come back so we can present it to the Village. He did have a, uh, the one salesman, the salesman we've been working with, he did have a couple of questions on how, how we're gonna purchase it, um, I know it's, Mr. Giantino's got the resolution for, for later on, I don't know if you want to discuss it now or wait till the treasurer?
No, we'll wait for it to come up on the agenda.
And that's, uh, but the specs are done, so as soon as he has a clarification on which way we're going with it, then we can get the final set done and present it to the Village Board, so we're, you know...
I would like to be, you know, have the presented, presented, a presentation to the Village Board in regards to the findings of the, the committee.
Okay, so, uh, when I get that back, then we'll, we'll sit down.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Chief, if I could just take a moment just to, um, thank you and all the members of the Fire Department for that outstanding parade this weekend, it was quite a spectacle and you really have, kudos beyond belief that the, the committee pulled that thing together and it was just fabulous.
The guys on the committee did a lot of it.
Yeah, it showed.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mention it, but me too, I, I mean, I was there for the whole day, the entire parade was such a huge success, um, the honor guard is, is, you guys have a great honor guard, I'll tell you that much, you know, yeah, excellent job, thank you.
Thank you.
Really put it, you know, the Village of Suffolk on the map with that one. Okay, at this time we have, um, representatives from Avon that would like to present to the Village Board.
Good evening Mayor, members of the Board of Trustees, my name is Seth Mandelbaum, I'm a partner with the law firm of McCullough, Goldberg and Stout, I'm pleased to be here this evening on behalf of my client, Avon. Michelle Dory is here, who some of you know, she's head of facilities for Avon and works out of the research and development facility right across the street. Uh, we also have from Actio, Real Estate Advisors, Michael Katz and Zach Cherny, who have been advising, uh, Avon on their real estate transactions throughout the New York metropolitan area. I'd like to give just a little bit of background on, on why we're here, if I may, and then of course we're happy to answer any questions that the, the Board might have. Uh, so, as many of you might be aware, Avon has had a rough few years financially, uh, gone, the company has gone through a lot of changes, uh, both in the US and globally, uh, the North American business was spun off, uh, the New York City headquarters was closed and moved to the UK, uh, Avon has really restructured, they actually just sold off their Rye, New York facility over in Westchester and, uh, one of Michelle's jobs has been to take a look at all the various real estate holdings and analyze whether there's any assets that are underutilized, uh, that could be sold frankly to raise cash, uh, for the company and that's what happened with the Rye facility and, and, uh, the facility here in Suffolk has, uh, been analyzed as well and we're right across the street, as everyone knows, the main, the main R&amp;D facility on Lafayette, um, the site is actually just under 12 acres and consists of three historical parcels, but it's only one tax lot. So, when Michelle and her group came to me and said, "Okay, there's this nail enamel parcel called", because they literally used to make nail enamel there, "which is this orange on the west side of Washington, which is only about 16% of the overall acreage", there's a parking lot north of the train tracks and then the main site where that glass building is located that, that was built a few years ago. And I started to take a look at it and, uh, started analyzing the, the documents that were signed in 2003 by not only the Village, but the Rockland IDA, the Town of Ramapo as the assessing body, uh, the County of Rockland, uh, and the School District, the former Ramapo now Suffolk School District. And it became clear that in order to sell this asset, the nail enamel parcel, not only did we need a subdivision from the Suffolk Planning Board, which I'm, I'm happy to report was granted back in June, uh, and, uh, we're in the process of finalizing the plat to file with the county clerk, we have one or two more steps, but the planning board chairman has signed it, it's now going through the final steps before we can file that with the clerk. Um, there's also this payment in lieu of taxes, or pilot agreement, from 2003, which has about another five years left on it. And that agreement is a fairly typical, uh, tool, a tool in the IDA toolbox, in addition to sales tax exemption and mortgage recording tax exemption. And essentially the deal that was made back in 2003 was, "Okay, Avon, you want to build this world-class R&amp;D facility in Rockland County in the Village of Suffolk, we, the IDA, the county, the Village, the School District will agree what your taxes are going to be for the next 20 years or so, so everyone agrees what they're going to be, you can't challenge your taxes, but we agree they're gonna be this payment and in return, you're gonna build this facility and, and bring these jobs to, to Rockland County and the Village of Suffolk." So, the pilot agreement is, is on the overall 12 acres. In order to sell this lot, the way the deal is structured, the IDA actually is the current title owner of this whole property, it, it creates sort of a, a legal fiction that the property is off the tax roll and then it immediately gets leased back to Avon, uh, in this structure that is not done as much anymore that way, now it's more of a lease as opposed to a deed, but from our perspective, to sell this lot to any buyer, it needs to be returned from the IDA back to Avon. So, we, we've had a series of meetings with, uh, Mayor and Village Clerk and Village Attorney and, and staff, as well as representatives of the School District, the Town, the County, the IDA, uh, and a concern that came up in those discussions, that was raised by both the Village and the School District is, well, what if this, you know, originally we said, you know, "We think it's fair to take our payment", which for next year is $555,000, "and shouldn't we deduct 15.8% of that?". Uh, and, and the feeling was, especially from the School District, but also, they're the biggest beneficiary of course, of the taxes, "well, we've already budgeted for these amounts and, and you got a pretty good deal here, so, do you really have to deduct that?" And we, we went back to senior leadership and they said, "You know what, it's fine, we'll leave the payments the way they are in the pilot agreement, they do escalate over the next five years, um, and what we've guaranteed is, if this is sold to an entity that is not subject to real estate tax, we're not gonna challenge those taxes, um, we'll confirm that the payment will stay the same, if there's any difference, we'll make up that difference and, uh, this way, the School District and the Village won't be losing anything, but we believe is a very good chance that the taxes will go up, depending on who ultimately buys that property. Uh, but we've, we've said, "Okay, they're not gonna go down, so everyone can count on that number for the next five years, at the end of the pilot, the whole thing goes off, the pilot agreement goes away and the tax assessor can assess it for whatever the market value is at that time." So why are we here tonight? As I said in my letter that I filed a couple of weeks ago, we're requesting of each entity, uh, and the IDA by the way has already passed a resolution on August 15th saying, of course, we need to hear from all the other entities, but we, the IDA, have no issues with amending the pilot agreement to remove the nail enamel parcel from the pilot and leave this part in for the next five years. We're here to ask for this Board to authorize, uh, the mayor to sign an amendment to the pilot on the terms I just outlined, so this parcel can be sold and the rest of it can stay in the pilot for the next five years. So very simply, that's, that's what we're asking this Board to take action on and we'd appreciate you considering that this evening, we are under, uh, quite a time schedule, um, Michelle has been tasked with trying to sell this property as soon as possible, but certainly this calendar year, uh, and that, we've been working very hard all summer with all the different entities to get to this point, but I'm, I'm sure there are some questions and we're happy to answer those questions this evening.
Okay, thank you. Does the Board have any questions at this time?
I have one. Um, has a pilot agreement, uh, ever been amended in New York State like this? Do you know of, do you know where? Has another corporation done this in New York State?
Another corporation?
The way you want to amend it?
Not that I'm aware of off the top of my head, but legally I don't see any reason why it couldn't be amended, the, the agreement certainly contemplates an amendment, um, I can't tell you definitively that a pilot somewhere in New York State has been amended exactly this way, if that's what you're asking?
Yeah.
But there's nothing in the document or that I'm aware of under the law that prohibits amending it, it, it contemplates an amendment in the document, it says, "all of the entities must approve of it."
Okay, it's an interesting question though, to see if any other corporations have amended pilots within the state of New York through the IDA and if so, what business, what corporations were they? I don't know if you would be able to, um, get that information.
Well, I can, there is an analogous situation that Michelle has reminded me of, thank you Michelle, in the city of Rye with the Avon facility, uh, there was a similar, uh, agreement with the Westchester IDA, uh, the pilot there was a little bit different, um, it really was more based on sales tax exemption, uh, but there was, we actually negotiated an early termination of that agreement, uh, which was just entered into last year and the property was actually sold.
So that was a termination of the whole pilot agreement or was it an amendment?
Of the entire IDA deal.
The entire agreement?
Yeah, we, we had to negotiate, uh, basically an out clause from that agreement, again, it was a little bit different situation, but it was, it was also under an IDA paradigm and, and we worked with, with staff and the IDA there to...
And the city of Rye?
The city of Rye.
Okay.
But as to your question, um, I'm not sure, frankly, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the relevance of somewhere in Syracuse or Buffalo having amended an IDA, a pilot agreement?
Sounds like you, if I may speak for a second, it sounds like he was seeking, uh, information whether there's a precedence of this, that's all.
Again, I can try to find out, but I'm not sure that, again, that it's particularly relevant because this, this agreement that was signed in 2003, uh, contemplates an amendment, again, you have to decide if it's something you're willing to agree to, we're hopeful that you are.
It would be interesting to see the agreement that you reached with the city of Rye and the process, you can get us a copy of that, is that correct?
I would have to double check, I don't see why it wouldn't be a public document, but again, I must say, I must say it is a different issue in that, in that matter.
We understand that, we never went through this type of amending of a pilot agreement, so that's why the Board is, um, questioning, you know, they have developed their own questions to see, you know, how they could clarify it.
And the issue there was not focused on the pilot, it was focused more on sales tax exemption and, uh, employee headcount and recapture, there were really different issues in that case, just so we're clear.
And this is based on property tax exemption?
Excuse me?
And this is based on property tax exemption?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Yes, correct, but it was all under an IDA, but my, my only point is it was, the issues were very different in that case, but it was an example of an early termination of the entire agreement in that case, uh, that was negotiated with the IDA. The city of Rye did not really play a large role in that, just, just so we're clear.
Uh, you mentioned the, uh, the headquarters was moved from New York overseas, is that what you said?
Yes, it's a, it's a little convoluted, maybe Michelle, you can explain the, the global business versus the US business, I think Michelle Dory can explain that a lot better than I.
Okay.
Good evening.
Aye.
Um, so when I started, um, with Avon back in 2011, there was an announcement that came about that the Avon products, North America business was going to be sold off. So, that was then, they generated a completely separate entity called New Avon LLC, that was purchased by another organization. Um, at that time, what they did was they closed their corporate headquarters in New York and relocated the corporate headquarters over to the UK, this is all public information, all, um, in the news as well. Um, at that point, they relocated a lot of the staff, some of the staff to Suffolk, some of the staff unfortunately were laid off, um, and then in, I think, 2017, they decided to close the data center out of Rye, New York and again relocated some of the staff to Suffolk, to the R&amp;D facility and, um, outsourced a lot of the data center and data infrastructure to other locations throughout the United States. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that was, yeah, my next question was, what, what did you operate out of Rye? So you answered that as well.
Right.
Um, I, I don't know if I'm gonna get an answer on this one, but are, are we next?
Um, right now, Avon is in discussions to be purchased by, um, a large Brazilian cosmetics company, so my hope and Avon's hope is that we will be in Suffolk, definitely for the next five years as part of the IDA agreement and the pilot agreement and hopefully for many more years to come. I don't, I don't have a lot of insight into that, but I do know that there is a deal being structured right now that hopefully will be completed before, um, the first quarter of 2020 that will be able to tell us a whole lot more. I am not privy to that information, um, but we are business as usual, we are operating a full R&amp;D facility, we have all, over 270 employees currently employed full-time in that facility.
270, you said?
Over 270, yes. Um, and we hope to be in Suffolk for many years to come.
Is the, um, is the, does the R&amp;D center have any, um, unique capabilities within the Avon organization?
It has a lot of intellectual property and physical infrastructure that you can't replicate very easily.
Okay, excellent.
Okay. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Are there any more questions from the Board?
The entity that is looking to purchase you, the Brazilian cosmetics company?
Yep.
Is that a Brazilian Avon related company?
It is not, they are a separate entity, it's public information, Notora, um, um, is a Brazilian, a very well-known Brazilian cosmetics company, they also own the brand, The Body Shop, I don't know if you're familiar with that brand in the US, so they're looking to come into the US market and other, um, international markets that Avon has.
When, when you said that you picked up additional personnel...
I'm sorry ma'am, I can't hear you.
When you picked up additional personnel from the data center closure in Rye and the headquarters in Manhattan, how many additional people came out to work at this location?
Well, considering I handled a lot of the relocation projects, um, it was about, I would say probably about 35 from Manhattan and we just moved over about 80 people from Rye. And they are, some of them are transient, they, they do a lot of commuting back and forth and we are promoting, we are a, you know, a flexible work arrangement type of organization, modern day, um, so we do allow a lot of work from home, so some of our employees work from home a couple of days a week, but in the building on a regular day, we have quite a few employees.
I, I have a question to sort of follow up on what Paul asked, um, and I'm not sure that you're gonna have the answer, but you mentioned Notora being the, uh, company in Brazil that's looking to purchase, uh, Avon and, you know, what's here, now do they, would you think in Brazil have similar sort of research facilities that already... Now, do they, would you think in Brazil have similar sort of research facilities that already do the work, you know, the type of work that we're doing here in Suffolk at Avon?
I unfortunately can't answer that question. I don't have a lot of information on...
Because I'm just saying that because obviously with a merger of that sort, it's quite possible they would have no further use.
We, they are structuring a deal right now. I don't have a whole lot of information at the current time. I am on more of the facilities end of Avon and infrastructure as far as being able to maintain the operations here. Sure.
And just to follow up on that, you know, the, one of the reasons Avon is trying to sell the nail enamel lot is to raise cash quickly to try to maintain the facilities that it does have, including the R&amp;D facility. So although we don't have an answer to your question about their facilities and these other companies' facilities in Brazil, our task at the present time is to try to sell this parcel. And I understand there's a lot of questions about what might happen with the main facility. We don't have a crystal ball, we can't predict that far out. All we can, you know, Michelle has given you the best information that she has. So I do understand the concerns, but it certainly can't hurt us to be able to raise money by selling this lot as soon as possible. It can't hurt the cause of the overall goal of keeping the main facility here.
Of keeping what?
The main facility where it is, as Michelle said.
So you had mentioned that the nail enamel facility encompasses 16% of the total acreage, right?
Yes, 15.8.
15.8. Is it currently in use at all or no? Just for storage?
We currently use it for light industrial use and some storage. We have a lot of excess furniture and excess supplies there that we have regular operations in and out, mostly with our Avon trucks going back and forth. But we also do provide, I think that was part of, we provide additional parking for the Village, for the fireman's parade...
The parade, the events that we have, yeah.
...for many other entities. We provide, we have an arrangement with the mosque for them to be able to use the parking and for the community center overflow parking and things like that. So we've always used that building. It's not full operation, but we do have a lot of comings and goings, and we do have a lot of wrong gradient standards stored there.
No actual manufacturing at this time?
I'm sorry?
No actual manufacturing in that building at this time?
No actual manufacturing at that facility at this time. It's been quite a while, since 2001.
To your knowledge, the building that's there, is that going to require any remedial work as far as to help with any type of a sale that you're trying to do here? I mean, is that something that might need an improvement?
The sale would be as-is as a warehouse. It is fully air conditioned, it's not, portions of the building are air conditioned, the entire building is sprinklered and heated. We have an operating boiler system. It is a fully operational building.
What percentage, you know, you mentioned 15.8% for the lot that you're looking to partition off?
Right.
Relative to the whole piece? How about the, like, the building itself compared, you know, like, what is the square footage of the building itself?
It's about 35, 32,000 square feet. And as Seth had mentioned, it is, no matter who purchases the property, this property in order for us to gain title back to the property, this amendment has to go through the IDA and has to be filed. So again, we are asking that you approved the mayor to sign this amendment so that we can move forward with this, because we are looking to do it very swiftly.
Of course, in addition to the Village, you'd be seeking similar things from the school system?
Yes, and there are quite a number of meetings that we have to attend in the evenings, and if we can get those done sooner than later, that would be very helpful. So if we could maybe get some decisions made this evening, that would be...
Just to that point though, we have met with representatives from all the groups. We haven't had formal votes taken yet, but all the representatives have indicated that the proposal we made conceptually is acceptable to their groups, having spoken to mostly their attorneys, having talked to their clients. But we recognize we do have to go through each of those public meetings, and this is really the second one, the IDA being the first one a couple of weeks ago.
So to be clear, the IDA already signed?
They didn't sign, but they adopted a resolution.
They adopted the resolution.
Authorizing Steve Parath to sign the amendment and deed the property back to Avon.
Can we receive a copy of that authorization, that resolution?
I did speak to Nick Ward-Willis about that.
Yes.
The IDA website shows the action they took.
Okay.
The resolution was not posted yet. I did request it from, I think they might do it a month later or a couple of weeks later.
Okay.
The meeting was kind of mid-August, right before vacation time. So I do have a request in for that, and I'll forward it on to Mr. Ward-Willis.
So I know there's a lot of, there's a lot of information here for the board. I know that we've been in discussion with the board numerous times, we've met numerous times, and at this time I believe that there are still outstanding questions that need to be answered. I would not recommend to the board that we take a vote to amend this agreement tonight, but we'll move forward with additional questions and information throughout the next few weeks and then reconvene.
Can I ask specifically what those questions are so we make sure we answer all of your questions at once?
Well, I think we have questions amongst ourselves, amongst the board as a Village body, and that's the way we're going to, that's the way I would like to proceed if the Village Board is okay with that.
But if there's anything specific that you want from us, I understand you asked...
If there's anything specific that we want from you, from Avon, we'll contact our attorney's office to contact you. That's, that would be the way to proceed.
Okay.
Yes.
And may I ask that at least tentatively, if not officially, we be placed on your next agenda, which is a month from now, just assuming you will have worked through those questions?
Yes, that's fair.
We would appreciate that very much. Any chance your attorneys could have a resolution ready just in case at your next meeting?
I think that depends on what the questions and answers are. I think that depends on what the questions and answers are.
Okay, and I apologize for being so pushy. I'm from White Plains, you know, Westchester, but there's tremendous pressure on Michelle and her group, and we want to answer all your questions, but we also have a lot of incentive on our side to get this done as quickly.
And to that, we are here to protect the best interest of the Villages Suffolk.
Understood.
And that is our ultimate goal.
Mm-hmm. Understood. That's why we presented the deal.
Yes.
We think our deal does that for all the taxing entities.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I ask one more question? You know, you had mentioned that the nail enamel property was 16% of the overall acreage, and that's the percentage amount you wished to carve out of the pilot total.
Well, our original request was for that, that was rejected in our initial meetings with representatives from the school district, the village, the county. So our second offer, which was what we discussed with representatives, was that we will not reduce the pilot payment, that it would stay the same. Pilot payments that are in the actual document would stay the same. It's 555 for this year and then escalates, I just want to get my numbers right here, over the next five years. The last year is 643, so it goes up about 10% a year, I think, or so, maybe a little less.
That's, that's all inclusive, school and...
That's the total, and then of that, the Village's portion, again, I want to get my numbers right, the Village's portion is just over 28%. The school district is 64.5%, and then the town of Ramapo and county of Rockland are between 3 and 4% each. So clearly the school district has the biggest piece, just like the taxes are divvied up generally, but the Village is about 28% of those total payments that are set forth in the exhibit. So what we're saying is, we're not, no longer asking to reduce those payments, so that 15.8% would come out, but the payment would stay the same on the remainder. So there'd be no reduction from that number of what we're currently obligated to pay, even though there's property coming out.
And if that property were to be sold to a non-ratable?
Sold to a non-ratable. We would not ask to reduce that payment at all. It would not go down, is what we're saying. Even if this piece becomes non-taxable for some reason, we're not asking to reduce that payment at all. Because when it gets deeded back, it'll be after some period of time.
So you'd be covering the cost of that payment through the term of the pilot?
Excuse me?
So you'd be covering the cost of that payment through the term of the pilot?
Yes, the pilot payment would not go down at all. That's what I'm saying.
And it, Mike, I don't know if you're aware, as a fully ratable property, would the, is the tax rate actually higher or is it in line with, or what is the difference?
My understanding from the assessor is that if that property comes off the roll, it gets a new assessment, so any previous assessments would not be applicable. So I wouldn't be able to give that answer even if I knew what it was assessed at.
Right, okay.
So that's something that we would, you know, I know we were in discussion with the assessor's office at this, you know, in the past couple of weeks. We need to continue those discussions also to determine the impact of either a reduced assessment or an increased assessment, and we don't have those figures as of today.
I did take a look at the town of Ramapo tax roll. Based on the current, you know, they show the assessment, but then they show it as exempt. This is very rough math, but our estimate is that the overall taxes, if this entire thing did not, was not subject to a pilot, would be over $2 million a year. So taking 16% of that, it's a little over 800,000 attributable just to this lot, which is more than the total pilot payment for the whole thing. And again, those are very rough numbers, but just to give you an idea of the proportional amount, and again, this was a deal that was done in 2003 for that project that was built for the R&amp;D facility, but that gives you an idea of what the assessor might assess this lot as when it comes out of the pilot.
The $2 million number though, again, that's total...
It's a little over 2 million, I don't know the exact numbers.
But I'm saying that's including the school, including the Village.
Total, exactly.
I'm just making sure I understand the words.
So 28% of that is attributable to the Village.
Okay, last question, I guess. Do you have any environmental concerns that may exist on that site that you are aware of?
I'm not aware of any, I don't know.
And a Phase 1 environmental has been completed?
Yes, it has.
But not a Phase 2?
Not a Phase 2, correct.
Which suggests, of course, that there are not any major issues if the Phase 2 was not required by a Phase 1.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so that's the, that's the way we'll proceed. We'll have the attorney's office from the Villages Suffolk contact you, is that correct, Seth?
Yes, thank you.
And then from there, we'll draft out questions and concerns and continue our investigation and place you on the agenda. Amy, the Village Clerk, will place you on the agenda for next month?
Yes, and I have one final question. Should we plan on coming to the workshop also or just the regular meeting on October 7th, just for scheduling purposes?
We could plan on having you at the workshop, sure, that would be a good recommendation.
Okay. So it's the 9:24 workshop and the 10:07 regular meeting, right?
Yes, both at 7:00 PM.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time, we really appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
See you soon.
Thanks.
Okay, next, we have an agenda, an application for a special permit used at 11 Wayan Avenue. The applicant is Ann Pless, if she may come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name's Robert Pless. I'm appearing on behalf of Good Dog Pet Training, seeking a special permit for dog training, daycare facilities, and overnight boarding. Ann's going to explain...
I'm sorry, can you speak into the mic a little closer?
Sure, sure. I'm here on behalf of Good Dog Pet Training, seeking a special permit for dog training, daycare, and overnight boarding between eight and 12 dogs, which will be on appointment only to existing clientele. Ann's going to explain a little bit about her operations, and any questions, feel free to ask.
Good evening, how are you? So it would be training, daycare, and boarding. The daycare and boarding would be offered to training clients only. Classes would be offered in the morning on Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, in the evening on Monday and Thursday, as well as Saturday morning and afternoon. The facility would be closed to the public on Sunday, but being that there's overnight boarding, there would be staff in the space caring for the dogs being boarded overnight. Within the kennel space in the building, there will be soundproofing. There's a packet that was submitted to the Village Clerk, which explains all of the soundproofing materials that are going to be used in that space to minimize noise, not only to the public, but also to the other dogs in the space, helps to keep stress levels down while dogs are boarding. And then, you know, any questions that you guys have?
Will any of the animals be outside?
There is a portion of the property that would be a potty area, so they would be outside to go to the bathroom, but there's space for a play area inside, so they wouldn't be playing outside, just going in and out to use the bathroom.
Joe was here. Is Mr. Tishna here? He was here. Does anyone have any questions? Are you from Ramsey, Seth? It looks like it here?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you try to open a facility in Ramsey first?
No.
Or you came straight here?
Right here. I like the building, I like the look of the building.
Okay. Okay, so this evening, what the board, what we're actually going to do is just accept the special permit application, and we'll forward it on to the building department for their recommendations to the Village Board, because the special permit is authorized through the Village Board. Mr. Tishna? Are you, are you familiar with the special permit application before us for the dog boarding facility? Can you speak to it for the, to the board? The zoning requirement and the special use permit?
So the, they're before you now, obviously, because it is permitted in the zone on a special permit only. The one requirement that, or there are three, a yard is one of the requirements for a specific amount of yard, is one of the requirements that they, that the board could either grant them permission to or limit whatever their ability is there. Bless you. The only one that they're coming to you for is the proximity to apartments.
Well, this is, we're actually, we're just, yeah, we're going to discuss just the application and then we're going to forward it to the building department for their review.
For our review.
Right, for your review.
Correct.
And then you will make those recommendations back to the Village Board.
Correct.
Okay. Does anyone else have any questions? Does anyone else have any questions? Yeah, once we receive the application, we'll be able to hear... We'll be able to receive the recommendations back from the building department before the next village board meeting.
Correct, yeah.
Yes, actually before the next workshop.
Right, before the next workshop, right.
Right, okay.
You'll get all the ones, all right?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this recommendation also would need to go before the planning board. Is that correct? Mr. Magrino, are you here?
The only recommendation I would make maybe is amend that resolution just to include, sorry, a referral to the planning board. If you could get on the planning board's agenda this month, you know, that's fine. And I'm not exactly sure where the location is, but it may also have to go to county planning if applicable.
So off of Route 202, right?
Yeah, well, it's state...
Wayne Avenue.
Yeah, so if it's on Wayne...
So it would have to go to the county.
It should go to county planning also. So if you do that in tonight's resolution, that'll help speed, if the board's interested, moving it along.
Building Department and county. So could we just accept the application as is, but amend the resolution to reflect the referral to...
Absolutely. I would just ask, right, as part of accepting the special permit, you're referring it to the planning board for its review and recommendations. It's just a recommendation to back to this board. And also county planning. Again, two lines are...
Okay, does the board have any other questions?
No. No, not this one.
Okay. So I have the resolution accepting the special permit application. Be it further resolved that the board to forward the application to Village of Suffering Planning and Rockland County Planning for their recommendations.
Motion.
As well as the building department, correct. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Albert, second.
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
You're welcome to come to the next workshop if you'd like.
End or planning board meeting.
So we would come back here again?
So they'll be put on the agenda?
Who doesn't want to go to the workshop?
But what about the planning board agenda? Okay, we'll set you up for the planning board to get put on the planning board agenda this month.
Okay, did you have that? I'll have them contact you. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, have a good night. Thank you.
Where is the... I don't have my notes on it. Culture and Recreation? I got it, I got it right here. This way, this way. Next, Ms. Mills, Culture and Recreation.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, village board. So a few events that we have coming up in September. This Wednesday, September 11th, will be the 9/11 ceremony here in front of Village Hall. And that will be at 7:00. It will be a candlelight ceremony. This Saturday, September 14th, Dog Day with the Lions Club. I'm sure Frank, you'll mention it when you return. We're looking forward to it. It's a free event for people to visit, but if you participate, there is a fee. But it's a fun event. I've been to it the last couple of years, so I hope people come out. It's going to be up at Yorkshire Park, starting at 10:00 AM this Saturday. Upcoming this Saturday also in the evening is the Midget Mounties Bonfire. They will be having a parade here, starting at Village Hall, starting at 5:45 PM. The lineup is at 5:45 PM, and then the parade will kick off at 6:00. Village board members, you're invited to march in the parade. And then 8:00 that evening, there will be a bonfire down at the ball fields. The street fair is coming up this Sunday, September 15th, 10:00 to 5:00 on Lafayette Avenue. And then our biggest event of the year is coming up, Suffering Day, which will be on Saturday, September 21st. The daytime activities are from 11:00 to 3:00. These are all down at the ball fields down by Round and Pole Avenue. And then the evening activities, we have Country Fresh, and we've got fireworks going off in the evening. The entertainment starts at 6:30, and then the fireworks will go off at dark. And then Connor School, there's a bike rodeo that they're going to do up there at Connor School. The recreation department worked with the Westchester Medical Center and with Connor School principal, and we were able to obtain helmets that they're going to do as a donation. So it's a great community event. Connor School is getting the word out about it. I know the police department will be part of it as well. It's going to be a great day up at Connor School. Fall events coming up. We have yoga for beginners, beginning again in the evenings. Those will be at 6:30 over at the community center on Monday evenings, October 7th, the 21st, the 28th, and then November 4th. And then the nutrition workshops are starting up again. The first one will be October 1st in the community room at 10:30 in the morning. And then we have Walking Wednesdays coming up. We're going to do a new thing this year. We're going to have self-guided tours. So they're going to go off on Wednesday evenings, October 2nd, the 9th, 16th, and 23rd. If any village board members, mayor, if anyone's interested in joining the group with the self-guided tour, we'd be more than happy to put those out there. The Halloween window painting contest.
What time... I'm sorry, what time in the Walking Wednesdays?
The Walking Wednesdays, I believe, are at 6:30.
6:30?
I will confirm, though, because I'm not sure if that's... I didn't write the time down for some reason. I will confirm. The Halloween window painting is coming up. I talked with Ori today. The Chamber of Commerce is always very good to us, and it's a great combination of the chamber and the village program. They are going to be donating the prizes for the kids to join. It's a great day. It starts at 10:00 that morning. We go downtown to the village. The kids get to paint windows. Have a great afternoon, great morning in the village. So that will be October 12th. I believe on my sheet, I said October 11th, but it's October 12th. And that starts at 10:00 AM. The Halloween Parade, I can't believe we're talking about Halloween, but we are already, will be on Saturday... Sunday, October 27th at 2:00 PM. And then one thing that I didn't note down, the Repair Cafe. This was something we talked about a couple of months ago, but it will be October 20th over at the community center. And that will be at 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And that's a county-run program, and they try to get one location each of our five towns. And they picked the Suffering Community Center for the Town of Ramapo location. So that will be on October 20th, and we're looking forward to hosting that at the community center.
And what was that event again?
The date is... It's called the Repair Cafe, and it's on October 20th. It's a Sunday.
I remember you spoke about that last month. I don't remember what it was.
So it's an interesting concept that they have. People bring their items in to be fixed. So there's people that are going to be working the Repair Cafe, and you can bring up to three items to it. They will fix them for free, and whatever you come in with, you leave with, so...
Let's bring the sound system in. This one.
What's that?
What time is that?
Oh, to bring our sound systems in.
What are the hours for the...
It will be from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. So they have all artisan. So if you have jewelry that needs to be fixed, a light, a lamp, something around your house. So it's the idea of reduce, reuse, recycle. If you have something that needs to be fixed, instead of getting rid of it, they want you to try to fix it before throwing it away. So it's the... The county is very proud of the Repair Cafe, and I'm really happy that they chose the community center to partner with us. So that's on the 20th. The next thing I have for discussion on this Thursday, September 12th, Nancy and I are asking for... Nancy Christopher and myself are asking for permission to attend a Walking College Seminar, which will be on Thursday, the 12th, in Yonkers, New York. There is no charge for this program. And it's a program that we've been working on the last couple of months with the Rockland County Health Department on walkability within the village, how to get more exercise to families, ways for kids to ride their bikes safer. It's just a... It's been an interesting project. We sat with the mayor the other day, and we're trying to get more ways for village residents to use public transportation, to use... To walk at the village. So the seminar will be on Thursday, the 12th. So I'd like to request permission to attend that.
So we have a request for Kathy Mills and Nancy Christopher to attend the Walking College Seminar on Thursday, the 12th in Yonkers, New York, at no charge. Do I have a motion for that effect?
Motion.
Motion, Trustee Albert. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes.
Thank you. And the last item, I sent a newer one to... A newer sheet to Amy and to Joanne the other day. Clifford Theater, I'd like to request us doing a winter program in December. And I'd like to hire Anthony Kolar as our director for that program. We have... Everything will be done the same as Clifford Theater here in the auditorium. And I know we haven't done permission slips for this program yet, but Ralph, I'd like to try to meet with him and talk about permission slips for this program. That came up after Clifford, so... So I'd like to have permission to hire Anthony Kolar as a director for this program.
Well, I think that we... You know, I think that maybe we should discuss it before we present it to the board to really see what direction we're going with it, with Anthony. And so we have a clearer picture on what we really want to do. So that's what I would like to do at this time.
The reason I was asking now is Suffering Day is on the 21st, and he wanted to mention it to the kids. So the timing was just before Suffering Day. But if we need to wait, that's fine, too.
Yeah, let's have some further discussion on this so we know what we're doing. We're just seeing this for the first time. Board have any questions?
In your budget?
It absolutely is the budget, yeah. I actually ran a... Michael, I should say, ran a report for me. Clifford Theater did phenomenal in fundraising this year. So the amount of money that we have for Clifford is in really great shape. So the amount of money that we've put out and the amount of money that we brought in, we are in excellent shape for Clifford Theater.
Any other questions?
So can it cover the cost? Why are you requesting $500?
Well, that's the price... That's the cost that I want to... It would be a contract with Anthony Kolar as a director.
So Clifford Theater can't cover the cost?
Clifford Theater absolutely could cover the cost, but I want to do a contract with Anthony. That's... I don't know if I needed permission to do that, but because it's an odd thing for us to do a winter program for Clifford, that's why I was asking for permission. But it is absolutely in the budget for Clifford. I have a lot of leeway with the Clifford budget. We did extremely well this season. So I'm asking, I guess, for the particulars of having Anthony hired to do this program.
So it's more for the salary for hiring Anthony Kolar? That's total $500 for services?
For Anthony, yes, that's what it was.
That's why I think we need to have some discussion, some further discussion, just to... You know, this isn't the forum to really discuss this whole contract negotiation and issue with you and Anthony.
Okay.
Okay, does the board have any other further questions?
Kathy, what day was the bike rodeo at Connor?
The bike rodeo? I didn't write that, I'm sorry. It is Saturday, September 28th.
It's on a Sunday. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Isborn.
Mr. Mayor, thank the board. Nothing to vote on tonight, just quick update. In August, we had 790 police calls and blotters. And I wasn't going to mention, but here tonight, we Spring Valley Police Department had a homicide last week. And I just want to bet in honesty, you don't even know I'm doing this, but the homicide that occurred, one of the suspects was someone who lived in the village of Montebello, frequent saw downtown a lot, known to be frequenting different gangs in the area. So the homicide investigation took place. While he was on vacation, Officer York is assigned to the county intel unit. And I spoke to him early that morning about the investigation and who was involved, being that he had been hanging out and stuff, and it's a particular individual. Due to the work of the intel unit, particularly with Officer York, he was able to track down several addresses, and the suspect within 12 hours was captured by the North Bergen, New Jersey police, along with the intel units, Spring Valley, and all the officers assigned to it. So you didn't even know I'm doing this, but I just want to say the job, because this particular person has given us problems that we... That they arrested for the last several years. So good job, Andrew. Didn't mean to bounce him, but had to do it, so. You did an excellent job.
Just on a follow-up to that, chief, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Not at all.
I also received some information in regards to Andrew, Police Officer York, and it states, "I would like to bring to your attention the commendable job performance of Police Officer Andrew York during the Spring Valley Police Department's homicide investigation on 9/2 of 2019." He was an important resource for us, who was very responsive to our needs and supplied valuable information that helped move our investigation quickly towards an arrest. Thank you very much. Sincerely, Lieutenant Richard Olazuk.
Olazuk.
Olazuk. Spring Valley Police Department. So on behalf of the village board, I'd like to commend you on your great service that you provide to the Village of Suffering and at the same time on this investigation. Thank you, Police Officer York. Great job.
He's here tonight because he was downstairs assisting me with our dear hockey league, one of my coaches. You've had equipment tonight, so thank you, Andrew. Speaking of dear hockey, Friday night's opening night? Steve, I just talked to your son. I was up there with Jack a little while ago. We're gonna sit and talk for a while. Your game started 5:15. They're gonna go to probably 9:30. We're gonna be cooking for the kids. We had a great turnout last weekend, tonight, giving that equipment and speaking to parents. It was excellent. So I'll invite it up, please, Friday night. Saturday, Frank, we will be there with the gorillas to cook for your event. Our dear programmers glad to team up with you guys with the dog event and have all of our kitchen, our program come up. So we'll be there for you strong. We are conducting a 9/11 memorial fundraiser for the Village of Suffering. We want to put some upgrades on the 9/11 memorial. We've raised a lot of money through selling t-shirts. We sell more t-shirts than I can imagine, and we're gonna be selling them tomorrow night again. We've made a lot of money for the village, and the mayor and I have been talking. And we'll obviously be coming up with the plan with you, just what we want to purchase and how we want to do it to really cap that 9/11 memorial and to make sure people don't forget, which is critical. So we'll be pushing it tomorrow night again, Mayor and our police department. And I will be here Wednesday as well for the 9/11 service.
I think it's a great effort that you're putting forth, selling the t-shirts and really to commemorate and to finish off that 9/11 memorial. Yeah, and we're not going to disclose it because it's going to be sort of a, you know...
It's a lot of money. It's a lot of money.
A surprise.
Yeah.
You know, and it's just something, as you said, that we never forget and we always remember. And by looking at that memorial, we always will. So thank you for your efforts and your department.
Thank you, Mayor. Any amount of residents that are coming out every night, you saw it the one night, it's droves and droves of residents. There's our local people coming to support this cause, so it's a great, great community event, so thank you. We'll be at the street fair on Sunday. We obviously have our emergency plans. In effect, we also will have our police trail and officers out there. I'll be working Sunday for all the event, Suffering Day, working with Kathy. We'll be set up for that, having our units down there. More interesting answer about the bike rodeo. Our department is running a bike rodeo. We are doing the bike training, we'll do bike inspections. We're going to have officers bike train. I'm one of the bike officers, I was certified as well teaching proper riding techniques and safety, so we'll be there on 28th, I'm sorry, it's after the Suffering Day event. We have a public safety summit with Good Samaritan Hospital, Westchester County Medical Center that'll be taking place this Thursday. We're meeting up with the Good Samaritan, Westchester County Medical Center staff to work on public safety issues, just to discuss things that's a separate things that we deal with and they deal with. So we're going to meet up with them this Thursday. Last month, we had, excuse me, canine training, which took place here in the village. We had 40 dogs from the region, New York City, Berkey County, Rockland County, Orange County, Westchester County, MTA, FBI, we did explosives training, narcotics detection and apprehension training. Great day for that. The fire parade, we worked great with Mike Sawyer. Mike, you guys did excellent, Mike Rapore and his crew. We were able to man, thanks to our department, assistance from some other officers and the fire police, 27 traffic posts on top of emergency plans, which we put together for every incident and case and event on an anticipated occurrence, which unfortunately can happen anytime. We did a school supply drive for our Pecana School, dropped off a big truck of supplies for our less fortunate students who couldn't afford them. And that's pretty much all I have. If you wouldn't mind, after the public comment, I will stay in case of question, I have to respond back to a scene for an investigation occurring tonight at this time to assist my officers. If you all came here, I texted you earlier about it, if you don't mind.
I have.
And I will stay for public comment, in case anything comes up or if you have any questions at all, please.
Thank you very much, chief, and thank you to your staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, board.
Chief, I just got one question.
Sure.
One topic we talked about previously as a board with you was some of the parking on Orange Avenue in front of the Sheldon Building.
Yeah.
As I assure you know, that entrance to the upper parking lot is open now.
Yes.
And we talked about that first spot, as you exit that lot on the left.
Yes.
Bit of a blind spot, but I think that spot is still...
Okay. Understood.
I don't know if we can temporarily cone that off as no parking until it can be painted.
Yeah, I know, we did discuss it. Mr. Hunt, are you here? Can you help us out on this question?
Absolutely.
I mean, I know the chief can handle it also, but I know that Joe, the chief, and myself have been working on those two spots.
Yeah.
Were we able to look at that, at the Sheldon on Orange Avenue, coming out of the upper lot to make a left, we were going to remove that first parking spot?
Bring the left to the left side.
No, no, on Orange, one at a time. On Orange Avenue, from the upper parking lot, coming out onto Orange to make the left, that first spot that you would look at to the left.
We were just waiting for final resolution to be completed, and we saw that far out in the corner. We have a signed job.
So we need a public hearing. So we can re-stripe it pending the public hearing. That's what I'd like to make a motion now.
We also have a petition.
Well, that was something different. Let's just deal with that parking spot because of the left turn issue. We really didn't get into an address. But the striping of the first spot to the light, we're going to, so I'll make the motion, stripe the first spot to the light, to the left on Orange Avenue, outside the upper entrance of the Sheldon, pending the public hearing. Do I have a motion? Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Girard, any further discussion? We're all clear on the location, right?
Yeah.
We talked about it numerous, we did the last spot. Correct. Now let's do the first spot.
Absolutely. Thank you for my, absolutely.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Hunt.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Anybody else have any questions? Just Mom here, just the ones, okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Grant Ryder, Mr. Rela.
I have a very short half-hour presentation, so...
Wow, thank you.
No, I only have three items tonight. The first, I want to talk about the heavy-duty truck, which cost $249,000, and we did get a grant for it for $250,000. So that's a reimbursement grant, the paperwork was submitted this month, and Dazni, who is sending us the check, says we will have that by the end of the month.
Oh, wow.
Michael's been notified of that, so that's good.
Will that happen?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure, yeah. I'm that one. So I also want to just thank Joe Hunt and Amy and Charles, because in order to get the reimbursement money, we had to have like the title and the registration, we had to deal with New York DMV, and we all know about that, so it got done. I put in, we have three garbage trucks. We have a 1997, a 2002, and a 2004. So imagine if you were driving around in a 1997 car, 2002 or 2004. We're in pretty much dire need of a new garbage truck to replace the oldest one. It's under continual repair and it's getting more and more expensive to run that. So the cost of a new garbage truck is approximately $250,000. They're now more state-of-the-art where they can handle recyclables, garbage, rubbish, and general debris. So we should know in October if we've been awarded the money, but then once again, with the contractual process and whatnot, it could take about nine to 10 months to actually come to fruition.
If we were to, is there a set number that we possibly get on that, right?
No, no, we don't have to contribute any money, it's just a flat $250,000.
If we get the whole amount?
Yes.
Fantastic news.
Yeah. Then finally, the wastewater treatment plant upgrade project, that's a $9 million project that's estimated at. Okay, this past month, we put in for a grant for 25% of the cost through the EFC. It's called the Water Infrastructure Improvement Act. Okay, so 25% of 9 million is $2,250,000. Okay? Simultaneously, we also put in for potential low-interest financing for that project. Michael Genito's been very helpful in this, so has Charles, and so we should know about that application status within the next 60 days. Okay, that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Fred.
Yep.
Reach it up, thank you. Okay, this time I'd like to open up the podium to, for audience participation. If there is anyone from the audience that would like to speak, please come up and state your name and address. Come on up.
My name is...
Right up to the microphone, please. Name and address. There you go.
My name is David J. Stein. I live at 4 Quincy Court, 10901. I had the great fortune this past Saturday, September 7th, to attend the parade. I came down tonight simply to thank you, Mr. Mayor, the village board, the police department, and especially the fire department, and as well as the other fire departments and groups that participated. It was a great day and it was a great parade, and I simply say, thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you for saying that. That means a lot.
My name is Carrie Ann Southwell. I live at 20 Hillcrest Road, zip code 10901. And I actually live between Sunset Drive and Forest Drive. So I think you are all familiar with that block. And even you particularly, Paul, is very intimate with the block.
Yes.
So I'm sure you know what I'm going to say. I know another neighbor has come prior months about the road, and that is one of the two things that I would like to discuss tonight. It's not, if you could imagine, and I'm sure you can, it's not something new. The road condition on that specific block is in really poor disrepair. And some patchwork has been done, spotty here and there, but it's really not addressing the overall issue. It is a safety concern. It also is a poor representation for people that pass through the block, as they may migrate and travel between Suffering and going to other places such as Jersey and vice versa. I noticed that the neighboring streets, north of it, south of it, and also your block as well, Mayor, very nice. So I would like to offer today to please ask for cooperation, to please have that block road in entirety done the right way. I'm an engineer, my husband's an engineer, and there's only so long you can get around with just these little patchwork. We really need to address the real issue.
Mr. Zwicki, on roadway improvement, phase 10, is Hillcrest from Sunset to Sunset...
Sunset to Forest.
Is complete on there, and that should be, expected to be paved on this...
That should be with...
The entire thing or patches?
No. Milled and paved.
You got what I was telling, right? Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, we, you know, we as a board and work with DPW to figure out which streets need to be prioritized. There were some, as you know, some pretty big potholes there.
Yeah.
So I had gone to Charles and put in a work order to at least, you know, not wait till November to address those very big holes.
Right.
So that was taken care of, but that may have given you the impression that that was just another round of patches, but that's not the case. We have it. As Charles said, it's a priority, so it will be taken care of.
That's wonderful, especially since before it gets really cold. So this November?
Yes.
Oh, excellent. Thank you. So that's number one.
Okay. Was that the easy one or was that the hard one?
That was great. I love coming in.
Wait until the next response. Go ahead.
The next one, I think, is mutual benefit for so many young kids. Now, my son has played in the Suffering Little League, and you might know of him. I know a few of you probably do, throughout his childhood, and is now playing on the Suffering Middle School team, and then hopefully the Suffering High School team. His name, obviously, Connor Southwell. Lefty, picture, but anyway, I never went to the bathroom that's there, you know, and I never really heard really good things. And I thought that perhaps, you know, I've been to a lot of baseball fields because there's travel and All-Stars and all this stuff, and they typically have better plumbing systems at a lot of these other ball field yards. So I heard about a wastewater improvement and stuff like that, but can we also possibly consider doing some type of sewer connection and refurbishment so that it would be more as a, like a public health nice for the kids, their parents, and I think it just really encompasses what the Suffering Little League is also trying to portray and embrace.
That's a great idea. I'm not that well-versed on upgrading bathrooms, so we can definitely look into it.
Yes.
You know, I know it lies very low within the field, in the floodplain there. Charles, I don't know, can you speak to these points of, you know, possibly upgrading the bathrooms down at the field? Is there any limitations?
Actually, we did investigate that a number of years ago. And I have to go back and revisit. We did have some complicated factors, as you mentioned, is the floodplain, it's in a low area. But I could take a look at that once again and revisit that and see what the issues were and see if...
Okay. If you could, just get back to me on that.
To point if it was just purely money or if there was other issues as well.
Right.
But we can take a look.
And may I also suggest that you may want to partner, possibly for funding, with O&R? Because they always look for kind of community things that they can hang their name on. So that is just a potential.
We have a good relationship with O&amp;R with funding.
What's that?
We have a good relationship with O&amp;R.
Wonderful, wonderful.
It's tough to get the money out of them.
But you know, it's just an idea because...
No, absolutely. I agree.
And I think it has so much betterment for, you know, for years to come.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'd like to address her with a plummy. There was a facility where the parking lot is now for the commuters, up against the bank, had several bathrooms, it was regular restroom facilities, and they came, they were porcelain, I believe.
They were what?
Porcelain. And they came up from Walmart down to Jersey and smashed them all.
Did you think...
The sewage was working fine, the toilets were working fine, there were sinks in there. They busted...
That must have been a good facility.
And they got away with it, and they never repaired it, never...
Wow.
Okay. So so you know, there was at one time...
Right.
Working facilities there.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. The next thing, last time I was up here, I spoke about the river problem in Lake Road.
Yes.
And the way bridge. Have we gotten anywhere? Did you find the documents?
Refresh my memory.
There were surveys that were done because they knew that the road would be caving in.
Oh, I got you. Yes, there you go. We are still researching that, yes, with the Drainage Agency.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Because of dedication and everything on that.
I know, that road was just built way too close to the river.
That was a cow trail.
That was a cow trail.
Cow path, yeah.
Yeah.
It goes one back.
And if the cows would have...
Different generations.
The cows would have been better off over there. You're right.
The problem was the abuse to the stream that caused the greater erosion, all right? Because you did things that created, exacerbated the situation. Next, up above, after you passed Montebello Road headed north on the lake, on the river, there was like a major preserve, you could call it, Martian Meadowlands. It's all drying up. Do you know if there's something causing that? Have you looked into it?
No, I'm not aware of it.
Take a ride up.
Okay. I'll check it out.
It's, we've had rain and it just seems like it's very low for something like that.
All right. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Carol. Always a pleasure.
And don't forget, that bridge is going to have to be replaced.
Okay.
I'm Tim McInerney, live at 883 Road, Suffering. I'm actually here to represent the VFW Post 2973. Just to thank the village board and all the village members, everybody who worked in the village, especially the DPW. They went above and beyond to get it done for dedication, and it came out very well. So just wanted to thank you. Wanted to thank Amy because she wrote a lot of the stuff out that minus chicken, with that chicken scratch, I guess is the word, and she was able to correct it, so everything came out. So there again, I wanted to thank you. I do have one question. The park that's across the street, Virginia Mentions Park, there used to be two benches, and they were taken out. Now, the two benches down at the DPW, they've been refurbished, and it's just a matter of waiting for the staging to put them back into that park. Is there some way that you could kind of step it up a little bit to get it done?
There's always a way. We'll look into it.
All right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for bailing me out, Tim. Carol's a hard act to follow. I wouldn't want to do it. Mr. Rela, just as a point of order, I drive a 2002 and I always have a 2003 car in my driveway, so those slackers in the DPW can just make do. I love you, Joe. Couldn't resist. Good evening, Mayor and board. Bruce Simon, 31 Utopian Avenue, representing the Village of Suffering Community Foundation today and the Not Just Battery Saturday. You all have the flyer, you all know what's going on. Just wanted to know, were there any questions? You saw the Girl Scouts here today. I want it noted for the record that this was not my doing. They came to me, okay, officially. They had another project in mind and it fell through, and they said, "Well, there is this other thing we can do." And they approached me and I said, "Well, if you put it together and do what you're supposed to do, you're welcome to join." you're supposed to do, you're welcome to join." Are there any questions about Not Just Battery Saturday?
No, I think it's a great idea. I think that it gives the village residents the opportunity to drop off that, the unused, well, the dead batteries and the, and the monitors and everything else that's on that flyer. Paint cans, uh, water equipment.
Tires, light bulbs.
Tires, light bulbs. So, we urge everyone, and you know what? We'll get that message out to the residents to make it a successful, um, not only Battery Saturday. Is that what we're calling it?
Not Just Battery Saturday.
Not Just Battery Saturday. Great idea. Thank you.
That's not my idea. I'm just the one carrying the load right now.
Would you, would you like us to, to promote it through our Constant Contact and our Facebook page and all that?
I would, I would really appreciate that, as would the members of the committee. I'm sure the, I'm sure the village, I'm sure the community would appreciate knowing that it's coming.
Kathy, you have those, that information and, and make sure that we advertise that and make an event out of it, so it's very successful.
I also want to thank the CSEA members for coming forward and volunteering their time and their effort. Uh, I was just discussing with Joe, and we have discussed earlier, but we're just discussing how we're going to stage the day downstairs in the parking lot. They know what they're doing. I'm staying out of their way. They run that equipment. That has nothing to do with me.
I agree.
So, I think we're all on board here, and I think this is gonna be a great, great turnout for us.
I was talking to them, trying to show them how to dig a hole the other day, and they hit me in the head with a shovel.
I don't think that hap...
Hi, Joe.
Hi, Dave.
You sure it was about the hole?
(laughing) All right, we'll stop there, Bruce.
There we go. Thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Bruce, before you walk away, I, and I know this isn't exactly your thing.
Curses foiled again.
Um, there were, uh, Girl Scouts doing a project that was building, like, little libraries in Bon Air.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, but I never saw anything else about it. Its completion...
Nancy Christopher is following up with that because she spoke with a resident and the resident suggested additional advertising, so she's going to reach out to the group that did it to see if there's any more suggestions for their advertising.
Mm. It would have been nice to, you know, if we, I'm sorry. I, I remember, I thought there were two locations that were being done.
(inaudible).
And one up in, right. So, they did finish it.
They did, but, um... I don't think people are gonna understand what it is and what it's used for, so that's what they're gonna do.
Although it was not my daughter's troop, I do commend any young people who do these kind of projects. The little libraries, I think, are great projects for girls working on their Silver and Gold awards and for boys working on Eagle's projects as well. Anybody watching has, needs something done. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Bruce, actually, I have a question. I'm sorry.
Oh.
My apologies.
I thought we were friends, Steve.
So, these items that get collected on Not Just Battery Saturday, which sounds like a great idea, who is then responsible to get them to actual places where they can be?
Area.
Okay.
Your timing could not be better.
Okay.
Would you care to come up here, sir? Kind sir?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Bruce.
We take it over to county and then our, our, RAC takes most of the TVs and tried to, um, get some of the parts out of them to make money for other charities.
Oh, great.
But it's a normal process.
Oh, yeah.
Are you done with him?
Yeah, I'm done. Thank you. I was just curious. I, I was just curious, if it's just a pipe...
Hi, Board, Mayor. My name's Joe Hunt. I'm the CSEA president here in the Village Suffolk.
President.
Um, I have a question and then I have another one. First question, as we discussed openly about adopt a planter throughout our parking lots to open up to the public, so Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, or any kind of organization, where do we stand on that? Do you know?
Let's have some further discussion on that tomorrow, and then we'll try to really see what...
We really need to get some flowers.
What locations, as we discussed, like Lot A, um, right, Lot A, the entrance to, um, Suffolk on, on, way, on Route 59, coming into the village, which I didn't follow up for the, I think that was either the Rotary or the Chamber. So, yes, we should, we should follow up on it.
I mean, in the past, the CSEA president have pushed away from programs like that, but the Rotary, the Garden Club, all the girls, all the men and women and the children here that live in the village, um, should have a piece of the village besides paying taxes. You know what I'm saying?
Yes, and we appreciate that. If we could work cooperatively together with the union and have an adopt a, a, a planter or whatever it may be.
As long as I stay alive, you can. I don't know what's gonna happen after.
No, we appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, my second question. Bruce might be able to verify this. Early on in my career here in the village, we used to do, uh, rummage day at the B Lot. Kind of helps us clean out garages. We don't have to pick up bulk on Monday, you know what I'm saying? And the people were able to put a table up. It was a small fee, and then we'd have, um, plenty of dumpsters to take it all away at the end. And it was easier for us to pick it up when they dropped it there than it was going house to house.
We had positive and negative feedback on that. We did discuss it most recently. So, I mean, we can continue to discuss it. I mean, it's too late in the season now to start one. If we would plan one, it'd be for the...
In time, everybody's gotta get out.
Be one for the spring, maybe?
That's up to you. I'm just bringing it up because it was a good thing, another community again to gather besides the street fair or, you know, a parade. It's just to show that we have...
What did we call it? None, junk sale, stuff sale?
Stuff sale.
Stuff sale, rummage sale, junk sale, Joe sale.
Joe sale.
It's just something to think about. And again, the CSEA is here to help out any way we can to any organization or any taxpayer. Um, just so, excuse me, you know, some of my members walk up driveways for veteran handicaps that can't bring the garbage out. One of my members goes to a house in Bon Air in a condo because a little old lady can't lift the lids and takes her garbage out of her hallway, doesn't even go in the house, and puts it in the garbage for her. And then we do that for some other seniors when they're here and they're not in Florida.
Thank you, Joe, and I'm sure everyone appreciates your work you do. Thank you.
Joe, I have a quick question. I'm sorry. I have a quick question. So, I, I thought of it when we were talking about the other thing with the planters. Um, there used to be a sign, uh, on Fox, on Maplewood, I guess it was, actually. So, where Fox Lane becomes Maplewood, um, coming in from New Jersey into Suffolk, there used to be a, like, a wooden sign.
Sign, yes.
With, like, a railroad sort of look and everything else. It was a really nice sign. And I noticed, I guess about a year ago, it's not there anymore. And I was curious.
About a year ago, the gentleman went up the hill, knocked all our signs out and tried to back into Andy Dale's house.
Oh. Yeah. So, I was just curious if there's a plan.
We put in a claim. Um, I don't know where it went. I got all the signs, demand power to go out there to clean the road, to pick up the damage and to replace the signs, but, um, that was back when Virginia was still here.
Sure.
And I don't know where that, if we ever got any money.
So, I'm just following up on that because it would be nice to see those signs back.
No, um, I do have quotes to replace them. They don't make them out of wood. They want to make them out of Plexley glass or plastic, so they longevity, but it's a little bit more cost factor than wood. But I still have the quotes for three different sign companies in Rockland. So, once I get the okay, then we're gonna do some.
Sweet. Thank you.
Just since he brought up the stuff sale, just so you know, that was run through the Community Foundation for a long time. Uh, kind of was the baby of both Mrs. Hagerty and the late Mrs. Menschner. Um, the, the issue became that less and less people were showing up. The whole goal of this was people to clear out their garages, clear out their basements, and sell their stuff. Less residents were showing up and more professionals were showing up, selling commercial goods. And that's when, that, that was a large part why it kind of fell off, because it lost that feel that it had had for all those years. It was just, for lack of a better term, a flea market after a while, and people didn't want to come out for that. They couldn't go anywhere for that. They, they were looking for something different. When it changed, that's what it was. It was $10, I think, to reserve a space. It was, it really was, I'm sorry? It was a couple of bucks to reserve a spot. People would go out and mark off in the B Lot, mark off a spot, and it just went the way of the dodo, I guess.
If, when commercial, if, if it were to ever happen again, maybe there could be some sort of, you know, rule that you have to prove you're a resident of Suffolk to set up a table.
I'm not opposed to anything, but even if you're a resident, if you're showing up with a truck full of item X, whatever it is, as opposed to you coming with a microwave that you don't use anymore, that's where the difference became.
Right.
People were showing up with loads of equipment that obviously was brand new. That was not the intent of the event.
Right.
I know some villages have, like, a, uh, a village-wide, or I'm not gonna say village-sponsored event of, uh, yard sales, and they give you a map and it's on a certain day, and everybody goes to these different tag or yard sale locations, you know, rather than the village. Everybody bringing their stuff into the village and creating possibly a mess. I know we had dumpsters staged down there where we'd have to take all the debris that everybody left behind.
I can say, I won't speak for the foundation, but I can say as the president of the foundation, we would certainly be willing to have a conversation about anything, about restarting this and finding ways to make it better than it was.
Mm-hmm.
I think that's fair.
We have foundation members on the board, right, Paul?
That's correct.
There you go.
He's one.
Right, Frank?
Right, Frank?
Yeah.
Frank has the experience. I think he used to sell lemonade at the, for the Lions Club there or something, right?
(inaudible).
What did you do? Hot dogs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have two foundation members sitting in the audience, too. We almost have, wait, we might have quorum here. Hold on, let's have a meeting right now. Thank you all.
Thank you, Bruce.
No? Lions Club, yeah. All right. All right, so let's move on now. Here we go. Department of Public Works, Mr. Zawicki.
We, we're closing the public, uh...
Is anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
No.
I guess not, huh?
You're on.
Oh, okay. All right, good evening, Board. I am requesting authorization to award the rebid 2019 Right-Away Improvement Project to the low bidder, Diamond Construction Brick, New Jersey, in the amount of $173,000 even.
Yes, I have the authorization to accept the lowest bid, 2019 Right-Away Improvement Rebid, in the amount of 173,000. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Girard, any discussion?
Just a verification. This was the one where we only got one bid initially and we had to rebid it?
There was, um, there was, there were two projects that, uh, we bid and only got, received one bid.
This was one?
Uh, this was one of them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And, and now we received how many?
On this one here, uh, we received three bids.
Okay.
Three bids allowed.
What, what sort of, when it says Right-Away Improvements...
Okay, so what, uh, what that, uh, will, um, scope of work for that project would be, um, curb replacement on Lancaster.
Okay.
And ADA ramps on Foxwood.
Okay.
So, the ADA ramps will be a, um, uh, requirement for receiving CHIPS funding for the, uh, the roadway improvement Phase 10 project. So, be, be a separate contractor, but it's, it's, it's tied closely to that project.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Uh, Precise Enterprises, too, Walk Hill, New York, has rescinded their sealed bid submitted on September 3rd, 2019, for the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project. Now, that was the second, the other project that we originally only had one bidder, so we rebid that project. The, um, the low bidder came in, as I just, uh, mentioned, rescinded, uh, their bid. So, um, I am requesting authorization to award the rebid Wayne Avenue Sidewalk Project to Covino and Sons, Rochelle Park, New Jersey, in the amount of $378,835.
So, I have the resolution here authorizing the acceptance of the lowest rebid Wayne Avenue projects in the amount of $378,835. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, do we have any discussion?
Um, yeah, just a question on this one. I, I, I recall, uh, Mr. Janito had made mention on this one that, um, Precise would lose their deposit on...
Well, there's a, uh, when we, um, go out for bids, um, each contractor, when they submit a bid, submits a, um, a bid bond. It's 10% of the contract amount. Uh, and there's some legalese that, uh, you know, that Ralph could probably get into.
So, yeah, the further discussion should come from the attorney on that.
And, and that's something we can discuss in executive session. If there's more questions from the board, it is something, uh, that I've been made aware of, and I've had some, uh, discussions both, both with Charles as well as with the mayor.
Okay, so that's pending. Okay.
But it shouldn't prevent us from awarding...
Right.
The next bid.
I agree.
If that's correct, um...
Yes.
Mr. Demanco, yes.
Also, um, I believe Mr. Rela had said something. There is a, there is a, um, a grant of some sort that applies towards this project?
Yes.
Can you remind me, can you remind me the amount again? I'm sorry.
Um, I don't have that. Is Fred still here? Fred, okay, Fred could speak to that.
Yeah, there's two grants for this project. One was awarded in 2016 for $110,000, and one in 2017 for $174,240.
$240. So, between the two of them, uh, that's...
$384,000.
$284.
Yeah.
Oh, $284. Right, right. $284,000.
So, $100,000.
So, for our, for, for our coffers to spend whatever is about 100, give or take.
Right.
Okay, just want to understand what we're up against. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, I am requesting authorization to attend the Southeast New York Stonewater Conference on Wednesday, October 16th, 2019, in Beacon, New York, at a cost of $135.
I have the resolution authorizing Charles Zawicki to attend the Southeast New York Stonewater Conference, October 16th, 2019, in Beacon, New York. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I am, uh, requesting authorization to, um, prepare and solicit bids for, uh, the relocation of the camera system and evaluation of the security camera technology. Uh, the, um, tentative, um, uh, bid due date, uh, or proposal due date, rather, would be October, mid-October. I think we looked at, um, the 15th, October 15th.
16th?
16th.
Yes.
Could be the 16th.
Authorizing a request for proposals for the relocation of the camera system from 45 Lafayette Avenue and an evaluation of camera technology. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do we have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any discussion?
Is, is that location, that's the former Parking Authority building or something? Or...
Yes, that's the former Parking Authority. There was award, uh, a grant awarded back in, uh, uh, 2006, Senator Morehand, for the installation of the security cameras to the Parking, Parking Authority, um, at which time now they are, uh, inoperable, need reevaluation and, and replacement, and they also need to be moved since we don't occupy the space.
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we still have access to the space even though we're not renting that anymore?
Yes, it's not, it's not rented by anyone.
Okay.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Mr. Janito.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. Um, the first resolution before you is authorizing myself and, uh, the village clerk, Amy Paffenroth, to attend the New York State GFAO Fall 2019 Downstate Seminar on Wednesday, October 2nd, in Terrytown, New York.
So, I have the resolution authorizing Michael Janito and Amy Paffenroth to attend the Downstate GFAO Conference, October 2nd, 2019. Um, be a further result, the Village of Suffolk will pay for or reimburse the employee for all actionable, reasonable, necessary registration, meals and travel expenses associated with attendance at this event. Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Trustee Albert, any discussion?
Just a question. I noticed the other requests had costs on their registration side. Do we have a cost on the registration for these two individuals going in?
I can share that with you. I don't have it at hand right here, but...
Okay.
But essentially, any of the costs that I request are already budgeted. They're not going to go over the budget.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next one is a resolution to amend the current general fund budget to transfer funds from the Justice Court to the Village Attorney, and reclassify payments made to the Village Prosecutor. Essentially, traditionally, the cost of the Village Prosecutor was in the Justice Court budget, and the Village Justice brought to my attention that that is not really the appropriate place for it, because it should be in, under the Village Attorney. If you didn't have the Village Prosecutor, the Village Attorney would act as the Prosecutor. So it's just a matter of transferring the funds from one budget area to the other has no effect on the overall budget.
Okay, so I have the resolution here amending the 2019-2020 general fund budget to transfer funds from the Justice Court to the Village Attorney, and reclassify payments for Village Prosecutor Services. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next is a resolution dealing with the new fire truck that is, we are looking to purchase. And the Fire Chief brought to my attention that there is a couple of things. One is that when you order a fire truck, because they're very specific, everybody knows exactly what truck you're going to order, and dealers don't typically compete. When you go out to bid, there's only one bid that you receive. So across the country, however, there are different consortiums. As you know, New York State no longer has like a Office of General Service bid that they used to do many years ago. So what you can do, however, is take advantage of another local government or state government contract. But the board, the Village Board, has to authorize that. There is a consortium out in Texas known as the Houston-Galveston Area Council Municipal Cooperative Purchasing Group, and they have an agreement where they actually go out and source these bids, and whatever the best prices that they, they get, they pass it on to the local governments that participate. So this resolution would allow us to participate in that cooperative bidding process.
Okay, so I have the resolution in front of me authorizing the village to participate, authorizing village participation in the Houston-Galveston Area Council Municipal Cooperative Purchasing Program. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any further discussion?
I think that was Hagan. I think that was Hagan.
It was both of them, but I heard, I heard Moira first.
I thought it was split.
Splitting the vote. All in favor?
The next one...
I'm sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one has, was just mentioned by Charles Zawicki, that the Wayne Avenue Sidewalk, we are looking at accepting a higher bid than a low bid. In any event, the bid that's going to be, that was accepted is higher than the original project cost. So this is a recommendation to provide the additional funding that's necessary to complete that project.
So I have the resolution amending Capitol Project 2018-003, 2018 Wayne Avenue Sidewalks. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any further discussion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next one is a resolution. At the last Village Board meeting, we adopted Project 2020-002, which was the project for the road resurfacing, 2020 road resurfacing, as was just mentioned by Charles Zawicki. And the board just adopted a resolution to approve the right-of-way improvements as part, this is to amend that project to include those right-of-way improvements as part of the project.
So I have the resolution amending Capitol Project 2020-002 to include right-of-way improvements. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gerard, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, in the next resolution, PERMA is our workers' comp carrier. And as such, they have a summit meeting for regional managers in Tarrytown, New York, on September 27, 2019. This is a resolution requesting authorization for myself, the mayor, and the Village Clerk to attend that regional meeting in Tarrytown, New York.
So I have the resolution authorizing Michael Janito, Edwin Makounis, and Amy Paffenroth to attend the PERMA Regional Conference, September 27, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Albert, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The last resolution is actually the most important, biggest one that we have tonight. And that's known as a refunding resolution. Essentially, we're all familiar with refinancing homes, refinancing mortgages, where you, you might have had an outstanding mortgage, but now you have the opportunity to take advantage of lower interest rates. So you refinance your home. And in the public sector, we in government have a slightly different way of doing it, but it's known as refunding. But it's, the principle is the same. At a point in the lives of our bond issues, we have the ability to go out and refund those bonds, refinance them, and take advantage of lower interest rates. We have the 2007 series bonds that we issued back in 2007, and the 2012 series bonds, both of which are eligible now for a refunding opportunity that, that our financial advisor has estimated will save us approximately $20,000 a year for 20 years. In other words, all total about $240,000. And we are recommending that we adopt this resolution. There's a time limit for us to do it. It's got to be within a certain time period before January.
That's good.
And this is to combine those two bonds, the 2007 and 2012, whatever we have left on them to pay, basically issue brand-new bonds in 2019, pay off the old bonds, and take advantage of those lower interest rates. And I should mention that this requires a roll-call resolution, and it's got to be an affirmative four votes of the Village Board. And then there will be an estoppel period, and I believe also that there is a permissive referendum period for this.
Okay, so I have the resolution authorizing the refunding, the bond resolution of the Village of Suffolk, resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Suffolk, New York, by a favorable vote of at least two-thirds of all members of said board, as follows: Refunding bond resolution of the Village of Suffolk, New York; Authorizing refunding of certain outstanding bonds of said village; Stating the plan of refunding, appropriating an amount not to exceed $3,750,000 for such purpose; Authorizing the issuance of refunding bonds in the principal amount not to exceed $3,750,000 to finance said appropriation and making certain other determinations relative thereto. Is that correct, Mr. Janito?
That is correct.
Roll-call vote. Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Just ask a question. So, so how far out does this now extend the...
It doesn't extend them any further than where they were.
Oh, it doesn't?
It just, no, it doesn't. There's no extension of the time. It simply takes the bonds that were due in their periods of time and just pays them off.
Gotcha.
Let me, let me just take a step back. I'm sorry about that. A motion to accept the resolution. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Albert, second?
Second by Hagan.
Trustee Hagan, any discussion? That was my point.
Okay. Okay, no, that answered my question. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay. Roll-call vote. Trustee Albert?
Yes.
Trustee Gerard?
Yes.
Trustee Hagan?
Yes.
Trustee Hertzman?
Yes.
And Makounis?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Okay. Okay, trustees. Trustee Albert, do you have anything?
The one question I had was about the signs, and I already asked that of...
Okay.
When he was here.
Great. Trustee Gerard?
No, I've asked all my questions tonight.
Okay. Trustee Hagan?
No, not at this time.
Trustee Hertzman?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Attorney?
Yes.
Mr. DiMarco.
Yes, I am recommending that the Board of Trustees approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Valuation Plus to perform an appraisal in an amount not to exceed $3,000 of a particular property.
So I have the authorizing an appraisal for a particular property. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to enter into a contract with Valuation Plus to perform an appraisal in the amount not to exceed $3,000 of a particular property. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hertzman, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Gerard, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Next, I have a resolution here approving the Suffolk Chamber of Commerce Event Permit Application to hold the annual Crawl-o-ween Ball Crawl Friday, November, November 1, 2019. The Board of Trustees hereby approves the event permit application for Suffolk Chamber of Commerce to hold their annual Crawl-o-ween Ball Crawl on Friday, November 1, 2019, at 8:30, pending the receipt of a cert, receipt of certificate of insurance, naming the Village of Suffolk as additionally insured and reviewed, and a review of all documents by the Village Attorney. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Trustee Albert, I'm sorry, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any discussion? All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next, I have a resolution authorizing American Needs Fatima Rosary Rally to be held October 12, 2019, at Avon Park. The mayor and the Village of Suffolk Board of Trustees authorizes the American, America Needs Fatima Rosary Rally. Man, that's a tongue twister.
Say that thing.
America Needs Fatima Rosary Rally to be held October 12, 2019, at the Avon Park from 11:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Hagan, do I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Hertzman, any discussion?
Is it wrong in any way that the Halloween window painting kind of coincides at the same time?
It just, the night codes us. It's actually...
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They're putting on the...
Okay, I have another update here. By state mandate, all New York employees must complete sexual harassment training no later than October 9, 2019. In order to comply with the state law, the village has arranged for a sexual harassment training course for management and for employees on September 11, 2019. There'll be two sessions, one at 10:00 a.m. and the other at 11:00 a.m. The sessions run a little less than one hour. It is extremely important that you arrange for, for your employees to be present at one of the above two sessions. There'll be signed sheets at the training, so we know that all employees and management have complied. Thank you. I can't stress it enough. Everyone must attend. Done. Last.
I just want to mention, too, that
Go ahead.
that the mandate also includes all board members. So that's the Village Board, planning, zoning.
All board members, correct.
Active volunteers. So those that don't attend the training on September 11 will be provided with links for a video.
Okay.
Excellent.
Perfect. Okay, I recently received this letter that I'm going to read to you. It's quite interesting. "We are writing to you because we have noticed that when we drive down Route 202 by Lake Atrim, duck and geese families are often crossing the road there over to the Berkeley Square Apartments. Many people are going way too fast. Even if they see ducks, some people still don't slow down, which is not okay with us. We usually see people slow down..." Let me, let me preface this. This is coming from Austin and Bryce, and they're 11 and 7 years old. So they're very concerned about the duck and the geese. They are only trying to let a duck family cross safely. Sometimes we have seen people honk and the ducks be, because they are in such a rush to get somewhere, and that, that scares them. We always worry that one will be hit by a car and that. And, and the letter goes on. So at the end, it says, "We will be willing to help as much as we can with installing signs and with whatever else is needed. We love the outdoors and nature and love to help in any way that we can. Thank you for reading our letter. Have a great day." From Austin and Bryce, 11 and 7 years old. They also supplied pictures of, of duck crossing zones and slow-down zones. So it's a good idea. And, and the family of ducks and geese trying to cross Route 202, which we need to protect, since we just counted all of them
They do it every day.
from the DEC. So I'm in contact with the DPW. We'll be putting up some signs to protect our environment and our ducks and geese. Thank you. Yes, Carol?
There was deer crossing sign by the...
Okay. So we could look at the deer crossing sign and duck crossing signs. Yeah, that's a good idea.
Just making an overall and friendly zone.
Right. All right. Thank you.
If you need them, we could have them come and support them. Otherwise, it's a duck citation.
If they don't stay in the duck walk, they're doing the perp walk. Motion to close.
Motion.
Motion. Trustee Albert, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a nice night. See you at the 9/11 ceremony Wednesday. Please come out and join us, and remembering...